Good evening, everybody, and welcome. This is the June 13th, 2022, meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission, and we are very glad you've decided to join us this evening. Established by state law, our planning commission is composed of seven volunteer voting age residents of Menlo Park appointed to four-year terms by our city council. Our planning commission reviews development proposals on public and private lands for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinance, which can be found on the city website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control variants, minor subdivision, and environmental review associated with these projects. In these matters, the commission is the final decision-making body unless appealed to the city council. Our planning commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezonings, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and the environmental reviews, and below-market-rate housing agreements associated with those projects. We work in close partnership. We greatly rely on the staff of our city's planning division, which is responsible for coordinating the enforcement of the city's zoning ordinance and related policies concerning applications for residential, commercial, and industrial development projects. If this is your first time joining a planning commission meeting this evening, we are very glad you're here, and we encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or interested member of the public. I'll turn now to associate planner Matt Pruder, and he'll be able to explain how members of the public can participate during the various public comment periods this evening. Mr. Pruder.
Good evening, Chair DeCarty and members of the planning commission and members of the public. Thank you very much. Regarding the procedures for communicating at this evening's meeting, planning commissioners will have their webcams on for the duration of the meeting. And for those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we ask you that you turn your microphone and webcam on during your presentation period for your particular item. A member of staff will assign you keyboard and mouse controls if you are displaying a presentation. And we then kindly ask that you turn off your webcam and microphone once you have finished presenting your materials for your item unless called upon by the chair. During the public comment period for each item, questions can be made by members of the public by sharing their comments via the hand icon on your Zoom interface screen, upon which with that hand raised, we'll be able to introduce you and activate your microphone. And alternatively, for those who are calling in by phone for tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad for the item you wish to publicly comment on at that time to notify staff that you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or a phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment period that you'll have another person following you to comment on the same line, and staff will ensure that the other commenter also gets to speak once you've finished your comment. With that said, I will hand it back to you, Chair DeCarty. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you for that, Mr. Pruder, and for the role that you'll be playing this evening, the multiple hats you will be wearing. With that, let's turn to roll call this evening. I will go in alphabetical order and ask that each commissioner also unmute themselves and verbally affirm that they are present. Let's start with Commissioner Doe.
Present. Good evening.
Commissioner Harris.
Hi, everyone.
You know what? I'm sorry, Commissioner Barnes, I apologize. I didn't see your face, and so I blanked. Commissioner Barnes? You can neither hear nor see Commissioner Barnes, but I do see he's square as present. We'll come back. Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
Commissioner Tate.
Present.
Commissioner Thomas.
Present.
And I am Chair Chris DeCarty. My pronouns are he/him. And actually, I'm going to turn it over to our planning director, Assistant Planning Director Sam Meyer, both for reports and announcements, and you can also determine how we should handle roll call for Commissioner Barnes. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair DeCarty, commissioners. Yeah, I think we'll need to check back in with Commissioner Barnes. I don't know if he stepped away, but it's probably good to check in before any items start. And for announcements, the city council will be meeting tomorrow night for a public hearing on the proposed 2022 to 2023 fiscal year budget and capital improvement plan. That concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sam Meyer. Any questions from the commission at this time? All right, seeing none. We will turn to the next item on our agenda, which is item D. This is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda and items listed under consent calendar. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda this evening, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment here other than to provide general information. And so with that, let me go ahead and open public comment again for any items that are not agendized later this evening. Any hands, Mr. Pruder?
Thank you, Chair DeCarty. At this time, I see no hands, but if you'd like, we could wait a moment longer just to confirm that there are no public commenters. Thank you.
All right. Well, given that we do not have a standing room only this evening, I don't understand why, given the weather and a basketball game being played somewhere. Perhaps we'll go ahead and close public comment. And I will turn to the next item on our agenda, which is our consent calendar. This is item E. We have one item on our consent calendar this evening. It's E1, Architectural Control, Alex Raymond, 325 Sharon Park Drive. It's a request for architectural control to conduct exterior modifications in an existing commercial development in the C2 Neighborhood Shopping Zoning District. This is a consent item, so before we act, are there any commissioners that would wish to remove this item from the consent calendar? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent calendar? Commissioner Riggs.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Tate. With that, we'll go ahead and take the roll, starting with Commissioner Barnes, if you are present.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Recording.
Yes. Commissioner Tate.
Yes.
And Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. That's seven to zero on approval of the consent calendar. Well, now move to item F this evening. This is public hearing. We had had three items. The first item, F1, which is a use permit and architectural control for 135 El Camino Real has been continued to a future meeting. So we will move to item F2, which is a variance revision and extension of a vesting tentative map, excuse me. Phil Heidman, excuse me if I've got the pronunciation wrong, 706 to 716 Santa Cruz Avenue. This is a request for revision to extend the expiration date of an approved variance by two years to continue to allow skylights on the third floor of a previously approved three-story mixed-use building to exceed the 38-foot height limit in the SP-ECR/D El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan Zoning District. The applicant is also requesting a two-year extension of a vesting tentative map associated with a major subdivision not to exceed four residential condominium units and one commercial area with rights reserved for up to 10 commercial condominium units. City Council is the final decision-making body for the vesting tentative map extension. That is our item before us, and I will now turn to staff for any report or setup.
Good evening, planning commissioners. There are no updates to the staff report. We do have the applicant, Philip Heidman and James Steffan from the Project 706 Santa Cruz to answer any of your questions. And if you have any questions for staff, I'm also available.
Thank you, Ms. Khan. To the applicants, Mr. Heidman, any presentation? You do not have to, but the floor is yours if you would like to make any remarks at this time.
I'm sure. Oh, thank you for that. I'll share my screen just to I hope you've all had a chance to look at this before, or you may have remembered this. This is the rendering of the elevation at 706 Santa Cruz Avenue. Form four is the architect. This building is a mixed-use project at the corner of Chestnut and Santa Cruz Avenue. The ground floor program is retail, probably slated towards food and beverage. The second floor is office, and the third floor is residential. The building statistics are in your package. It's kind of a modest proposal, three stories. The tentative map was drafted and had been approved in 2019. This extension, I understand, could be done administratively for the tentative map extension. We're asking that a variance for the skylights on the building, which exceed the height limit, I'll show you in plan where those are on the roof plan here. These are skylights on the roof of the building, and when you look at a section through the building, they're not they're not actually visible from the street. They are kind of sheltered behind a parapet, so bear with me here. So these are the sightlines, and these are the skylights in question. So the reason we're asking for a variance is when this project got approved, it was right when COVID hit, and we didn't know what the future of the project or any kind of product new development was. But as it turns out, it seems that architects are very busy, and construction is still commencing. Our client has been developing financing through a partnership, and as soon as that partnership is solidified, we will be authorized to do construction documents. The construction documents phase will take approximately six to eight months, and at that point, our variance will have expired. So we applied for a two-year extension to the variance, and I believe in the staff report that Fatin had distributed. I think the staff supports that extension. And if you have any other questions, you can let me know. But that pretty much summarizes where we're at with this project.
Thank you very much. So to the planning commission, I'd like to turn to public comment. But first, are there any clarifying questions for Ms. Khan or for the applicants? All right, seeing none. Why don't we open public comment in Mr. Pruder's capable hands?
Thank you very much, Chair DeCarty. At this time, I not seen any hands raised or requests for public comment, but as a reminder, members of the public are welcome to choose the hand icon, or if they're on the phone, dial star nine, and that will effectively raise their hands to request to make public comment. We can meet it with another moment if you'd like. I still see no update beyond that. Thank you.
Yeah, we can wait for a moment. All right, still see none?
I still see no change there, so you're welcome to close public comment if you so choose. Thank you.
That sounds good. Let's go ahead and close public comment. We'll bring it back to the virtual dais for commissioners' comments or questions, and ultimately, a motion. Commissioner Barnes?
Hi, good evening, and I apologize for my connection challenges at the beginning, but it's good to be here, and it's good to see this project. It's kind of good news, bad news. The the good news is, is having not seen this project progress, in the back of my mind, I was wondering whether it was still alive. It's a richly designed project. It's one of the few projects on Santa Cruz Avenue that is progressing, I think, because the at least up until now, the ownership has been really invested in making this project work within some downtown specific plan development standards, which are tough to get projects done. This is a high-quality finish. We went through a couple of revs on this project on the design side. I think it's very well done, and, you know, glad that it's coming back. Sorry to hear it's taking so long to get it through, but it's a tough time on a number of different fronts, and not the least of which is accelerating costs as well, combined with probably some slack in demand for the for the office space. So with that said, I heartily support the extension of the variance. The Santa Cruz Avenue needs this project. Menlo Park should have this project go through. It's a worthy project, and I certainly invite other commissioners to comment as well. That said, I will make a motion to approve per the staff report and the findings this project, so that's a first on the table.
Commissioner Barnes, we have a motion to approve per the staff report. And as he noted, plenty of time for other commissioners' comments in this. Commissioner Harris?
Now, can I provide comments, or do I need to second?
You do not need to second. You can provide your comments.
Okay. You know, I agree with nearly everything my fellow commissioner said. It's a well-designed project. It's it's going to look great on Santa Cruz Avenue. I, my only concern, I mean, I'm certainly going to be fine with the variance for the skylights, is that this is such a perfect place for housing, and given our needs and the new housing element, I'm just, I guess I'm disappointed that we only have four units. And I realize that you all are constrained by our height and density limitations, but I suspect with changing the general plan that we're going to need to do for the housing element, those are going to change. So I would, I just wish that, given that you've taken a couple of years, that now you're kind of at the point where we're about to make some changes, and I guess I just wish we could have had, you know, your two levels on the bottom for your retail and your commercial, and then multiple housing above that. So I guess I have a question. Oh, and then we wouldn't necessarily have to have four luxury units that are going to demand parking, right? We could have more units that are not going to be luxury units, because you'll be able to pencil that out. So I guess I have a question for staff, if I may through the chair. Thank you. And that is, if this, if a developer wanted to come back as we have approved our new housing element, what would be the process for that? Would they have to start all over? Like, how might that, how might something like that work?
Sorry. So Commissioner Harris, definitely with the new housing element coming into play and how that might change the number of dwelling units per acre, especially along Santa Cruz Avenue, that's something that we would need to look at in detail. So that might take us back to the drawing board with the applicant and see how that might work along with the regulations that we have in place for the specific zoning that the property is in on.
Thank you. So I guess my my thought to the developer, if it's at all possible, is as you're getting your financing, if you don't together, if you don't have it before the time that we have made any changes to our housing element, it's something that you could consider. So with that, I second, of course, I'm fine with the variance for the skylights. It's a handsome project. I just feel that we're kind of building for our current and our past, and we're not making building for our future. So with that, I'll I'll turn it over to, turn it back to the chair.
All right, so we have a first and a second for the staff report as submitted. Commissioner Riggs, you had your hand up. Did you want to withdraw your comment or?
I was only to to second the motion.
All right. Any other comments? Commissioner Barnes, you have your hand raised?
Only out of mistake. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions before we move to a vote? All right, seeing none. Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Barnes, I'm obviously just in a rut tonight. So let me now jump back to the beginning. Commissioner Barnes?
I was contemplating being bipolar and voting against myself, but I will agree with myself heartily on this one, so.
Hopefully, by the end of the evening, I'll get alphabet order straight again. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. It is seven to zero as submitted per the staff report. As Commissioner Barnes said, best of luck to you as you navigate this environment and everything you're doing for our downtown. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will close item F2. We will turn to item F3. Item F3 is the Development Agreement Annual Review. This is Stanford University's 300 to 550 El Camino Real or Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real project. This is an annual review that we conduct of the property owner's good faith compliance with the terms of the Development Agreement for Middle Plaza at 500 El Camino Real. I will turn it over to staff to set us up, and then all right, let me first turn to Commissioner Harris, and then I'll turn to staff to set us up. Commissioner Harris?
All right, I just, I'm going to, out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to accuse myself, given my how close my house is to this development.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Harris. With that, you are welcome to just put yourself on mute and also off screen, but listen, and then you can rejoin us when this item is closed. And with that, I will turn it over to staff.
Good evening again. There's no staff updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, and with that, I will turn it over to, I assume, to Mr. Durham?
Correct.
Welcome.
Hi, thanks. I don't have any I don't really have any slides or presentations to add. This is kind of the annual update, so I'll just, I'll leave it at that.
All right. With that, let me go ahead. Any questions of staff or of our representative from Stanford before I open it to public comments? Those would be clarifying questions from anybody on the commission? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and open public comment. Mr. Pruder, you can guide us through it?
My apologies about that. Thank you, Chair DeCarty. Sunset is kicking in, but yes, at this time, members of public can use the hand icon or press star nine to provide public comment on this item, and I don't see any commenters at this time, so we can wait a moment again if you'd like.
Yeah, we can wait just a moment. All right, still no hands?
That's correct. Chair DeCarty, there's still no hands, so if you'd like, you can close public comment period. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and do that. We'll close public comment. Let's bring it back to the dais. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. I had a quick kind of technical question. As I was reading through the staff report, it's about the education foundation payments. And there's this one paragraph that mentions that because Stanford is giving priority for the housing units to faculty and other employees, that that's going to reduce the tax revenue that would go to the school district. And I'm just a little confused by this point, because it seemed a little disconnected from the rest of this report. So I'd love it, I don't know if it's, you know, staff would be the appropriate party to answer this, maybe through the chair, but to get a little more clarity there, was it like, was that like not the expectation going in? You know, what changed here, and like, how much impact are we talking about?
Yeah, I think we'll direct that to Ms. Sam Meyer, maybe if there's any clarification about either the history or any changes over time.
Yeah, I think that was initially, the city was aware that that was a possibility with the housing being utilized by faculty and other staff, which would mean that the taxes wouldn't be due. And so then this was something that was worked out to help the school district since there would be more students, and they wouldn't have the same tax benefit as they would have from a regular apartment building.
I can just follow up a question there. So is, just to make sure these things are commensurate, so is the $1 million of the city council earmarked, is that commensurate with the amount that, I guess, is is lost in tax revenue because of the, you know, this housing priority for the faculty and other employees?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the exact numbers. I can see if we have more information that I can follow up with, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. Maybe we can sync offline. It's kind of a minor point, and so I don't want to get too caught in the weeds here. But it's significantly reducing the tax revenue that would go to the school district. So yeah, we'll follow up offline with more more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you for that. If we think about this project, it's, it has two components. It has the office component and the residential component. The office component pays, so what's in it for the city? With the office component, there were property taxes associated with it, if it's leased to a third party in it. That was the contention, it looks like it is. For the housing component, there isn't a property tax component to it, and then if you look at it, you know, overall, the city was very limited in the public benefit it could get for this project. And one of the the public benefit aspects of it is the under train crossing. So I'm acutely interested in that. That was a core fundamental theoretical give by Stanford for this project, and I'd love to get some input from from staff as it relates to what's in the staff report. And if that's okay through the chair to Ms. Sam Meyer, or whomever might be able to talk to that specifically, you know, where we are, it talks about spring '22 and into an agreement with Caltrain. What's been the progress on that? It sure seems like it's taken a while. What's been gaining issues? How, you know, how's the design going? What's the progress in terms of the other funding sources? What might we have looked at from other projects that, you know, could contribute to this, those types of questions? So through the chair, I'll start with Ms. Sam Meyer, if that's permissible. And my first question will be, can she talk a little bit about the agreement, or whomever on staff, to talk about the agreement to progress the design? What does that, what's that mean to progress the design?
And the Sam Meyer. If you're
I apologize. Unfortunately, I don't have much additional information beyond what is in the report. I think for this, I can also follow up after the meeting, if that's helpful. I think one thing that is I think one thing that is important to remember is the project was developed at the base level, so there was no public benefit proposal required. And so the city, but the development agreement did, through those negotiations, the city was received some benefits. And of course, the developer received some benefits, so. Yeah, that's basically the information I have, but I can certainly follow up with additional information.
So yes, the development agreement did call out responsibilities of the developer. And when you start to unpack what Stanford received from lot mergers and from a lot of different pieces along the way, the city enabling the construction of this project, it was a tremendous give on behalf of the city. And this is a core central element to it. So I guess if we're going to be looking to approve, we're going to be looking to review conformance to the development agreement. But yet we can't really talk about one of the essential tenants of the development agreement, which is the progress of this underground crossing. I guess I'm a little bit confused as to what it is. We, you know, what major discussion points might there be this evening?
Yeah, I think that's a good, good question. Usually, it's more of a simpler item, I guess. But luckily, we do have our Public Works Director here, Nikki Nagaya, and she, I think she'll be able to answer a few more questions on the under crossing.
Thank you, Corinna. Thank you, Commissioner Barnes, for the questions. So I don't have a detailed status report this evening to provide, but I can share this kind of offhand where we are with the overall project and some of the milestones that we're looking at coming forward. So one of the key elements is securing funding. So the Stanford contribution that's outlined in the Development Agreement is a big, big part of that. But the overall project cost, right now, we are tracking at about $20 million for which the Stanford contribution, that contribution's $5 million, as summarized in the staff report. There are also city funds that are set aside for the project, and we've been working over the last several years to try to secure the additional remaining funds. We've submitted grant applications to federal, regional, state, and local programs, and secured funding from the San Mateo County Transportation Authority, from Santa Clara County Parks, through process that was to review Stanford's general use permit several years ago, and then also through some applications pending through the infrastructure bills pending in Congress last year and again this year. So Representative Schu has been instrumental in advocating for including this project in some of those bills as well. So if all of those grant funds come through over the next year, we'll be in a place to fully fund the construction. And in the meantime, we've been working with Caltrain to kind of as summarized in the staff report, Caltrain will lead the design on behalf of the city because it is under an active railway and involves very specific construction techniques that they want to be in the lead for. So we've entered into that agreement, and they're beginning the detailed kind of engineering plan development now. And that we think will take a number of months to proceed. So the earliest we think would be in construction is late 2023 or early 2024, and then the construction to be completed in 2025. So that's the overall timeline that we're tracking right now, but it's contingent on securing that remaining funding.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. Mr. Barnes, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nagaya. If I'm going to ask you to say you can or are willing to to handicap that funding, that funding gap, right? Because grants are, they roll year to year, and it's like putting a wedding cake together. You got to figure out what's coming in at the right time, because if some come in, some go. As the, how should the public look at this in terms of the probability of putting that capital funding, you know, stacked together? What's, how would you advise the public to think about, you know, is it a 50% probability, is it 80% probability, or however it is that some type of metric gets attached to it? What's the probability of this happening, of the funding coming in? And can you give any sense of, you know, what might be done to help the process?
Yeah, I think I don't have a specific target percentage. I think we're definitely somewhere over 50%. I'm also a glass half full type of person, so I think that's, that's part of, you can't do this work without being optimistic and looking for our options in terms of funding. I think where we are with the federal bills that have currently, they either recently been passed or currently pending, I think do provide a lot of incentives for moving projects like this forward. It's a big investment in infrastructure, and we haven't seen that type of investment for now many years at the federal level. The last round of earmarks were kind of late 2000s, like 2009 timeframe. So it's been definitely moving projects like this forward has been more challenging over the last few years. I think that gives, gives me some optimism. There are also a lot of state investments in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure like this. And those programs, I think we compete quite well with this crossing being located in a priority development area and leading between, you know, a major city park and proposed housing and providing access across a major barrier to travel, being that the Caltrain tracks. So I think our chances of the grants that we're pursuing right now are good. There are what's called One Bay Area Grant Funds that are kind of regional in nature that we're competing, we're hoping to put in an application for in July. So I think our chances there are, again, are good. In the past, we've proposed for funding from the state's active transportation program, and that was not as successful because of the location of the crossing being closer to downtown and not serving a community of need. And so I think that that grant application, again, was not, not, not successful. We were not awarded funds there. But I think these, these next rounds, we have better, better chances to proceed.
Thank you. From a utilization of fund standpoint, is it permissible for the, for the city to be using transportation impact fees on this project? Are those funds allowed to be used for something like this, if there are to fees?
Yes, this project is in our transportation impact fee program, so it is a permitted use of those fees.
And when I think about, you know, we, it is, it is close, it is on El Camino, and it's facing ostensibly, when you think of Stanford, you think it's facing West Menlo. I want to remind folks that, for my neighborhood, the Willows, and as you go down the Willows East, you know, we are impacted by transportation, and I live, you know, right off of Willa Road, and it would be highly appropriate, I think, to use transportation impact fees that are generated throughout the city, inclusive of down through, and including along Willa Road down through to the Bayfront there for this project, because this project completes a circulation path all the way, you know, east to west, and allows folks to be able to go into the core of Menlo Park, the downtown areas, Hillview School, and the rest of it. And I think it would be a wise use of transportation impact fees to fill the gap, because you're going to have your Stanford $5 million. We're going to have what we can get from other grants and other sources, and there's going to be that gap finance and that gap piece in there. And I can't think of a better use to connect east to west, which is really what the city needs to have. And this is a, I think, a really good example of how to use that, those fees, that money for something like this. And I know that's not, it's a bigger discussion for city council, but I want to plant that seed here for the folks here, because this, this project really needs to get done. This is a critical artery circulation for bicycle pedestrian, for kids, who are trying, folks that are trying to get from east to west, from my neighborhood, for instance. Okay, and then a question for you, Ms. Nagaya. So are you feeling that, I'm sorry, for the design of it, and then the Caltrain electrification, how much of this is dependent on Caltrain's electrification? And it wasn't quite clear from the staff report when it said there is a dependency here, or there's a relation here between this, the engineering work, the construction work, and electrification. What is that relationship between electrification and this project happening or not happening, or timeline?
Sure. So right now, Caltrain is undergoing, they're in construction on the electrifications. They have an active contract. They have a contractor who has, you know, priority access to the corridor, and so they will not want to provide any sort of approval for construction that may jeopardize their risks in construction, in construction in the corridor. So I think the overall dependency is really timing, and when construction can proceed in the context of working with Caltrain to find the window that won't impact the the delivery of electrification in a timely manner. So I think it's mostly related to schedule and timing and coordination, as opposed to one happening and not the other in the relationship between the two.
And is electrification, is it fair to say, as electrification drags on, this project gets dragged with it in terms of progressing it? Is that kind of a loose relationship?
Generally, yes, but I think we've been having ongoing discussions with Caltrain to try to understand if there may be a window prior to electrification being completed. Once their construction is done, once the actual physical construction is done, they'll move into a testing phase. And so we may not need to wait until electrification is completed and service is operational in order to proceed, but there's a relationship between the two.
And there may be a window before they get underway. I'm sorry, did I say that correctly? Whether there's a window before they get underway or after, but just don't be doing it while.
They're, they're already underway, so that, it's really a function of whether there's a window during their construction, when they will not be working in this area, but they may be working elsewhere in the corridor between San Jose and San Francisco.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Nagaya. Thank you, Ms. Sandmeyer, for, for answering those questions I reviewed before. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you. So I was on the commission when this was approved, and I guess we're here tonight to decide to make a decision about the compliance with the Development Agreement. And kind of in a holistic sense, to me, it seems like the two one-time actions, one-time actions are kind of the, you know, the key things of interest. And it was Commissioner Barnes, who was asking about the funding for the crossing. You know, my read on this is that, you know, Stanford, is they're willing to pay the 50%, and it's kind of up to the city to match that. And so even though it's kind of conditional, I think Stanford's doing a pretty good job there. And then the affordable housing is already complete, and yeah, it's a big need in the community. So I'm pretty happy with these two things, and you know, the other ongoing actions seem like they're in a reasonable state. So at this point, I prepared to motion for a vote.
Your motion is to approve as submitted?
Approve as submitted.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, or a second from the commission? Commissioner Riggs?
Please, the second.
Commissioner Riggs has a second. Any other questions or comments before we move to a vote? Actually, I do have one. This is just a quick one, I hope, Ms. Nagaya. So you said that the answers to Commissioner Barnes' questions, that the project cost looks like it'll be about $20 million, $5 million from Stanford, and you discussed the ways to get the other 15 million. Was that the 20 million, was that the anticipated project cost at the time of the Development Agreement?
Thank you for the question, Chair de Cardi. No, it was not. It was, it was closer to 10 million to the initial contribution. I think from Stanford was estimated at about 50% of the cost.
Right, and we're now 25% and going south at this point. Okay, thank you very much. I will make a comment. I guess for the record, back to the city council is considering these development agreements and considering how they get implemented. Perhaps, you know, other ways to assure that the percentage stays the same over time, given costs, at least to consider in the future. Before going to a vote, any other questions or comments from commissioners? All right, with that, I will now begin with Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris is recused. Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well. Mr. Durham, thank you for being here. It's good to see you. Good luck as the project progresses.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Commissioner DeCardi, you muted.
Thank you. Let me try this again. We will close item F, move to item G, regular business. And we have one item G1, which is our 2022-23 Capital Improvement Plan, General Plan Consistency. Consideration of Consistency of the 2022-23 Projects of the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan with the General Plan, and I will turn it over to staff. And thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you, Chair de Cardi. I had to introduce myself briefly on the last item. I'm Nikki Nagaya, Public Works Director for the city. I'm happy to be here tonight to just briefly introduce this item. There are no changes to the staff report as attached to the packet, but I'll just give a brief overview. So the state law requires that the planning commission consider the proposed projects in the capital improvement program each year and determine their consistency with the city's general plan. Exhibit A, attached to the draft resolution, lists each of the proposed projects, as well as staff's analysis of the general plan policies that are most relevant to each project. There are eight policies identified overall, summarized as part of the analysis from the land use, circulation, safety, and open space elements of the general plan. The projects that are currently funded or proposed for funding next fiscal year are what's analyzed in that exhibit. And then projects with funding in future years are listed for information, but are not analyzed for general plan compliance until the, until the time that they're proposed for funding. So that concludes my introduction, but I'm happy to take any questions that you have on this item. Thank you.
So any clarifying questions before we move to public comment? Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you, Chair de Cardi. I have, I guess, a question of largely a technicality, but I couldn't help but be curious. When we have a project which is under construction, how is it that it can be indicated as tier three? I had understood tiers to be a matter of importance and likelihood of funding. So through the chair, perhaps to Mr. Nagaya.
Yes, by all means. Yes, by all means.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. So the general priority listed, the, the three tiers, one, two and three. Do indicate relative priority. But we don't necessarily require a project to advance to tier one before it begins the process. Just an indication of, of the relative. Importance, relative priority of, of each individual project. So as an example, our. Park pathway repair project is rated as tier three. It's a fairly routine project. It's very important. But in terms of the resources needed to deliver that work on a regular basis, it's, it's a little bit lower on the list. And so we assign, for example, a tier three rating, but we've just completed some pathway repairs. Most recently in Sharon Park and Neon Park is in construction right now. And so we do work to, to advance all the projects regardless of the, the tier rating.
Thank you, Ms. Nagaya.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Any other commissioner questions before I move to? Public comment. All right, with that, Mr. Pruder, I turn it over to you once again for. Moving us through public comment.
Thank you again, Chair DeCardi. Again, members of the public, you're welcome to provide a public comment at this time by raising your hand. On the Zoom interface or pressing star nine. I see no hands raised at the moment, so we can definitely wait another moment if you'd like. To confirm if any public comments are going to come through.
All right, any hands?
Still seeing none, so you're welcome to close public comment if you'd like. Thank you very much.
All right. I'll go ahead and close public comment and turn it back over to the commission for. Comments or questions or further discussion. My understanding, Ms. Santa Meyer, is that we do in fact need. A first and a second and a vote for consistency this evening. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There, there is also a resolution for this one.
So anybody on the commission with? Questions or comments? Commissioner Riggs?
I'd like to move to find the. Five-year CIP to be in conformance with the general plan.
We have a first from Commissioner Riggs. Again, more than welcome to have comments or questions or a second. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you. I'm happy to second in addition to a couple of questions. So I, for the record, I'm offering a second. And I have a question to Ms. Nagaya. About the, the. Process related to this. And it's, it's kind of like, how does this, how does the, the, the plan? Get. Put together, is it largely, what's the interaction between? Staff and staff, like for instance, you, your office, having a, having your. Finger on the pulse of what needs to happen around the city from an infrastructure standpoint. And then city council weighing in on what they believe the priority should be. Can you just educate me a little bit about this plan and its formation and what gets elevated? Or what gets, you know, started and what gets prioritized? What's the interplay between what staff recommends and is saying, or what staff is looking at and seeing? And what council's looking at and seeing and how that gets blended into a plan and, and made? What's that interaction like? How's that sausage get made?
A good question. And I, I think it, it's evolved as well. The, I've been with the city a better part of a decade at, at this point, and I think. You know, at the outset of that time. It was a, a more staff-driven process where the public works department would interface with. All the other subject departments within the city, trying to understand the various needs of our facilities, of our infrastructure. And we would put together recommendations for, for the council's consideration. More recently, I think we've used the city council's annual work plan and goal setting process. In order to take input about upcoming priorities and needs that may be on the scope of, of what staff is aware of. And then over the last, particularly the last five years, we've also made very significant investments. In developing strategic plans for a lot of our subject infrastructure areas. So some examples of those. Are the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was completed and adopted in 2019. Transportation Master Plan that was completed in 2020. We have a stormwater master plan underway right now. And there are, you know, half a dozen others across different areas and topics of, of our infrastructure needs. And so we are now really primarily focused on using those master plan documents. Which, which for the most part identified a number of, of prioritization recommendations in each of those subject areas. And taking those highest priority recommendations and folding them into the CIP on an annual basis. And so I think there's still involvement from the council. I think this, this year's process just with the overall. Goal setting, not, not occurring in the same way is a little bit different than, than usual.
Thank you for that. So this year, because it wasn't the. Public. Event, better term, at, at Burgess Park. There was less, you felt as if there was less community input. You heard less voices in the, in this, at, at that particular juncture of the planning process. Is that an accurate statement?
I, I think that's accurate, but I think we also have had significant input in each of those. Topic areas through the master planning processes. So I think there's still. While it wasn't as direct, I think we have a, a lot of indirect feedback that, that has gone into the, the recommendations. And I think too. As. We've seen the, the, our, our budget situation evolve over the last few years. We, we had significant reductions in our capital program investments in the, the 1920 and 2021 fiscal years. You know, upwards of 60% reductions in, in the, the budget for the. The annual investment. And so I think there's also a lot of deferred maintenance that, that we're seeing now. That, that really needs to be prioritized. And so this year's kind of funding recommendations. Do increase the, the investment in the, the capital needs of the city. And have some, some pretty, or both on pace to, to make our annual transfer. From the general plan to the capital fund as well as some, some additional strategic investments. Above and beyond that. So I think we're, we're also. Picking back up and, and in the recovery mode and trying to, to catch up with some of that deferred meeting.
Thank you. And I will say that I, I appreciate the strategic plan and the, the longer range plan and staff's input in that. I think. I, I think a capital improvement plan, which is based not on whomever yells the. Most vociferously and the loudest at a particular goal-setting meeting, but rather is based on. A, a strategic. Studied formula for what the city needs is an excellent way to, to figure out, you know, how to allocate resources. And done by, so I, I appreciate that process and I appreciate those strategic plans. And with that in mind, have you found the TMP to be a, a good document to be working off of?
Yeah, I, I think all the strategic plans that we've developed, definitely as we move into the implementation phase after adoption. They, they've all been helpful. I, I think the TMP in particular. And in my background being more in transportation, I think I'm probably most familiar with that document. The, the way it was set up in, in terms of, you know, identifying lots of individual projects. Can be helpful in competing for grant funds and advancing things that way. But, but no plan is perfect. And so I think we have, have lessons learned. We'll, we'll have over the life of it. Also potential amendments and, and changes that we'll need to make, but I think it was a good, good start in framing the. Transportation needs across the city.
That's good to hear. A lot of time and effort went into that. A lot of outreach into the community, a lot of staff time. A lot of development went into that plan and the fact that it's a, a useful framework for continuing to. Kind of track back to the city's identified needs is, is good to hear that the work product that came out of that is proving useful. So those are my two comments. Thank you. Thank you, back Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. We have a first from Commissioner Riggs, a second from Commissioner Barnes. Still every opportunity for any commissioner to ask questions or any comments. Before we move to a vote. I do have a couple, but I will defer to other commissioners first. With that, while other commissioners are thinking, first of all, thank you, Ms. Nagaya, for being here this evening and for tutus that you're here for our previous items. So thank you for that as well. And I appreciate your answers, Commissioner Barnes. And I would echo, it's great to hear to think about master plans and how these things work over time. And making those decisions and feeding that into the city. So really appreciate that. I have a specific question about how you anticipate doing that with the housing element. So as we get that approved, can you share a little bit about how you would anticipate that being considered? In both specific projects, about how you move on projects? Or when you know something like that is coming, do you pause in planning on a project? If you look at things like obviously development downtown or even with the corporate yard or some of the other publicly owned spaces that you're considering improvements. How do you make those decisions?
Yeah, that's a good question. We were just talking about that earlier today as well. I think the housing element and potential plan development, or excuse me, changes to the zoning code that may lead to, to development. In different areas of the city are always challenging. And I can give a, a practical example, a number of years ago, we had scoped in the, the capital plan. To resurface Ravenswood Avenue, along with Willow Road and Middlefield Road. Ravenswood was slated to be paved initially this summer. And I think as we started to, the design process over the last year. Realized then that the park line development at SRI was proposed. And so we don't want to go in and pave a section of street just before a major development. Gets considered because there are both resurfacing requirements that we typically condition as part of that project. And also, we don't want to repave the street right before construction. If the project were to be approved. So I think in that kind of context, we have to reevaluate the scope of that project. And change the extent. So instead of resurfacing from Alma Street and the Caltrain tracks to Middlefield. We changed the, the scope and, and will now plan to resurface from Alcamino to, to Laurel Street instead. So I think there are kind of real-time changes that we have to make in anticipation of development. And then with something like the housing element, I think will be potentially more transformational. And so we'll need, as those policies and, and programs get refined, I think we'll have some particular coordination. With our, our teammates in community development and working on how we plan for, for those changes. And the, the coming cycles.
Thank you for that. That's very helpful. And then the last, this is more a comment and it's a reflection on the transportation master plan. I appreciate. And it is like Mr. Barnes said, great to hear that it has helped with the prioritization and input about how to think about where to put resources. I think at the same time, it was a process that was very clunky. Because there was a disconnect between putting together that list and putting together a vision for transportation circulation across the city. And there was not clarity for both the members of the commission and the public about how that worked together. I think that also showed up in public participation in the housing element. So I think there are ways for us to improve in this and to get the best out of what you all bring as city staff. The expertise and the ability to look outside of political cycles, again, as Commissioner Barnes said. But I think the other elements of those types of plans, how to best engage the public, how to best work with the commissions that are put together to make that happen. Have room for improvement in the future. More a comment, no need to respond. Commissioner Riggs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to take advantage of Mr. Guy's presence to. Follow up on a previous discussion. And that has to do with our goals when we repave, one might say, our, our standards. A lot of paving in the Bay Area is done that I can't help but refer it. Refer to it as recoloring the road. All the flaws that are in the road are still there, but it has a nice dark color now and the stripes show up better. For example, Ravenswood over the years with the repaving. I know the inexpensive way to repave, even when you are putting another two inches of asphalt on. Is to scrape the gutter edge of the roadway and then add to the crown of the road. And Ravenswood is one of the roads in our town that has a rather significant crown. In fact, before the bike lanes went in, it was nonetheless. Much preferable to ride right up against the yellow line. Where the crown on the road wasn't so severe for a four-wheeled vehicle. On a two-wheel vehicle doesn't make any difference. So we have more than one such road. In some cases, it's evident when you park the car. And you don't realize what a slope you're on as a result of this crown in the road until you go to open the driver's door. And find that the door wants to close right back on you. I assume it's more expensive to scrape the entire roadway. In order to repave it, something closer to a flat. That was done at Bay Road, although we managed to shift the cost to another agency. About 15 years ago. Do we in the city have? In our specifications, do we give any weight to trying to keep the crown on the road? Down to something tolerable, or does cost drive every decision?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Riggs. So cost is definitely a factor in, in a lot of our decisions. But the, the slope of the road and, and making it accessible is also something that we have to look at. And so the, the crown, both from a, I think, driver comfort as well as accessibility. Is, is now becoming an issue on, on several streets. So we had the same issue surface on Santa Cruz when we repaved. Santa Cruz a number of years ago now, where we had to kind of do some. Interesting engineering to try to figure out how to reduce the crown and, and repave and also deal with drainage and accessibility. So I think Ravenswood is, is similar. We're having to do those engineering. Reviews now as part of the, the design work. As we get ready to go out to bid for construction. So I don't have. A very detailed technical answer to, to give you tonight, but it, it does, the crown of the road does present challenges for sure.
That's, that's, I, I think a good answer and thank you very much. All right, we have a first and a second. Any final commissioner comments or questions before we move to a vote? Commissioner Doe?
Um, thank you, Chair DeCardi. No questions. I just wanted to make a comment. I, I, my way through getting involved with the city issues and the planning commission is. Was through the environment. That was my first passion. And so I'm more familiar with the, for instance, climate action plan. So I, I just wanted to make the comment that. Some of these improvements like the streetscape or sidewalk crossing are things that people can. people can experience right away and appreciate the benefit, uh, whereas some other things like um electrifying our community, you may not be able to physically immediately see the impacts of that. And so I just, just wanted to say that I appreciate the balance of things that you feel in the immediate and that people can get behind right away and things that are in the investment in the long-term future, which is obviously the point of the general plan that we think about the, the now as well as the future. And um, I was amazed that the heating, the pool takes, it, it generates so many, so much of the emissions that really, really stuck out to me. But, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. As a user of that pool, it sure is warm. Um, so, appreciate it. Um, all right, with that, I will turn to a vote. Um, again, we have a first and a second, which is uh to uh approve uh as uh submitted by staff. And I will begin with Commissioner Barnes.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Doe?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Tate?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Uh, I will vote yes as well, so it passes seven to zero. And I'll echo what several commissioners just said uh to Mr. Guy and your staff. Thank you for your service, your dedication, and also for being with us here this evening to you and your team. With that, we will close item G. That is the only item we had um under regular business. And that moves us to item H, which is informational items. And I will turn that over to you, Ms. Sannameyer.
Uh, good evening again, Chair Decardi and commissioners. Um, so the next meeting will be June 27th. Uh, we have two uh single-family homes scheduled for that uh meeting. And that concludes my updates, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Sannameyer. Any questions for Ms. Sannameyer from commissioners? Ms. Sannameyer, I, I have one question. We received a letter um from um, an advocate in our community for um disability uh access as part of the housing element. I thought a very well um argued and uh presented request um around the concept of visitability, especially for single-family homes. I wanted to know how that will be fed into the housing element process, if you could just provide any insight.
Um, yeah, thank you. That's, that's a great question. I don't, unfortunately, I'm not very involved with the housing element uh team, but I can definitely check with them and get an update um back to you.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I think especially our commitment as a community to inclusion, um, that if you could uh help make sure that that letter is received would be, um, I think, a terrific service in this mix. I recognize that as a planning commission, we've already had our time for discussion and input in the housing element. So thank you for that. Any other questions for Ms. Sannameyer? All right, with that, uh, until two weeks from now, I will move to adjourn. Thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, to everybody who's participated, have a good night and a good rest of your week.
Thank you.
Bye.